All right, good morning. We're here for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, April 7th, 2021. We're in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street. And as always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you'll join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a really short agenda today, but some really important things going on inside that. And Katrina is here, and welcome back, Katrina. Chad filled in for you last week, and well, you got some shoes to fill now, huh? All right. Welcome.
Well, he's welcome back anytime. All right, good morning. Katrina Rothenberger, I'm the Public Health Division Director for Marion County Health and Human Services. As of today, April 7th, there were 19,577 total cases of COVID-19 in Marion County. 298 people have died. And our percent positivity rate continues to decline since the beginning of the pandemic. And now we're currently at 8.5% for our all-time positivity rate. For the last two-week period, March 21st through April 3rd, there was a 3.8% test positivity rate and 114 cases per 100,000. We do continue to be in the high-risk category, and in order to move to moderate, we need to be at 100 cases per 100,000 or lower, which is about 348 cases for a two-week period. And we're currently monitoring 22 Marion County residents in the hospital with COVID-19. COVID-19 case rates have decreased in Marion County in this two-week period compared to the previous two-week period by 0.7%. However, in the state of Oregon, they've increased 22% over the same two-week period. The cumulative test positivity rate in Marion County, it was 8.5%, which is higher than the statewide cumulative percent positivity rate of 5.7%. And the bulk of the cases are coming from the central Salem, northeast Salem, Brooks, south Salem, sunny side, and Kaiser zip codes. While other counties around us have seen their cases increase, it's encouraging that Marion County has seen a slight decrease. So we're hopeful, and we just want to remain and see those numbers continue to decline as we roll out the vaccine here. In Oregon, about over 2 million Oregonians have taken their first or second dose of the vaccine. And of those, we estimate about 127,000 have been administered in Marion County by our health system partners, which includes the first doses. Last Wednesday, we were approved to begin vaccinating those in Phase 1B, Group 7, ahead of the planned date of Monday, April 5th. This includes frontline workers, which is defined by the CDC as grocery store employees, clerks, government employees, and other essential frontline workers. Individuals living in multi-generational households, adults 16 to 44 with one or more underlying health condition. And then yesterday, Governor Brown announced that all Oregonians will be eligible to receive the COVID-19 vaccine beginning Monday, April 19th. And while everyone will be eligible to receive the vaccine, they should know that we may not find an open spot right away, and to just keep checking to see when they can get an appointment. Their vaccines are still limited as more groups become available and spots fill up quickly. We do have a number of vaccine clinics in Marion County, and they're listed on our website. And if you don't have internet access, you can call 211, or we can also help you make an appointment if you call 503-576-2828. And we're trying to focus on those folks who don't necessarily have access to a computer to help them with getting an appointment. And it is National Public Health Week, and I just wanted to take a minute to recognize all the dedicated folks in our health department that I've worked with every single day, sometimes every day, seven days a week. And over the past year, I've just seen our team grow and adapt to every challenge. Many of us have responded to all three of the emergencies we've had here in the past 12 months, pandemic, fire, and ice storm. I'm so thankful for all our hard work, and I'm happy that we have a couple of them with us today to engage in another public health intervention, which is immunizing some community leaders. So I can just jump right into the presentation.
So Katrina, thank you. And I see Reina is here. I know the mayor was going to try to join us, but he had something come up. So I just want to share that I've been waiting until I turned the ripe age of, I think it was like, what was it? Medicare I was eligible for last week. And I want to encourage people to get the vaccine. And so as with flu shots every year, we've done this on camera. Those people who are watching and maybe who view this later because it's recorded, encourage you to do this. I think today, we're going to be doing the Johnson &amp; Johnson, so it is the one shot. And that's probably all I could handle, is one. And so thank you for doing this. Thank you for allowing people to be encouraged. And I think that's what this is all about, is to encourage others to get the shot. And I guess, do you want me down there to do it, or?
Before we go into that, really, can I ask just a point of clarification? You had mentioned that the governor had said that all Oregonians would be eligible on the 19th, I think? And that's not like everybody, that's just 16 and older, right?
Right. If you're eligible for the vaccine, then you'd be eligible to receive the vaccine. That doesn't mean people who the vaccine hasn't been studied or tested on can get it. So that's a good, that's a good point of clarification. Thank you.
All right. Good luck.
Yeah. And Jan gives me about time. I said, I don't own a short-sleeve dress shirt, so I have to go through this whole process.
All right. Well, I was hoping to share a little information while the...
What's that?
I was hoping to share a little information about the vaccine you'll be receiving.
Yeah, go ahead.
While he's undressing, it makes sense to go forward.
Okay. All right.
Keep the camera on you.
All right. So there are three vaccines available and approved for use: Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson, which Kristi will be administering to Commissioner Cameron and Reina Lopez today. And I just want to take a minute to mention that these vaccines are safe, and they have undergone rigorous clinical trials. Typically, we don't see the number of people in clinical trials that we did for the COVID vaccine. So there were anywhere between 30,000 and 60,000 people that have volunteered to be part of this clinical trial. So we do have several different types of vaccines that have been studied. And of the ones that are approved for the market in the United States, two of them are the mRNA, Pfizer, Moderna, which does not actually contain the virus itself. It's more of like an email sent to your immune system that shows what the virus looks like and instructions how to kill it, and then it disappears from our body. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, on the other hand, is more typical to some of the other vaccines that we see in the United States that most kids get on a regular basis. It's a modified virus that delivers a gene that instructs our cells to make the antigen, the spike protein, and it triggers the production of antibodies and results in an immune response. And we just want to remind everyone that to consult with your healthcare provider, research the vaccine that you could potentially get, and make an informed decision on whether the vaccine is right for you. We do want to mention that you may experience some mild side effects, like a sore arm, body aches, or mild fever, some fatigue is pretty normal. In very rare cases, people may experience an allergic reaction. And while you are in between doses, you're not necessarily fully immune until two weeks after your second dose or two weeks after your Johnson &amp; Johnson dose. Continue to wear a face mask, physically distance, avoid large gatherings, and taking all of those preventive measures as normal. Once you're fully vaccinated, we still encourage you to wear a mask in public and continue to take all of those preventive measures while in public. But in your personal life, you can be a little bit more social with your household gatherings. And then you're considered fully vaccinated two weeks after your second dose. You'll no longer be required to quarantine after exposure to the virus unless you develop And check us out online for more information. And I'm really excited that we'll have a couple people here today receiving their vaccine on camera. We're administering the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which is the single dose. You may experience some mild side effects, but that's a really good way to tell that the vaccine is working in your body. So I'm really happy that Commissioner Kevin Cameron will be getting first dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And then we also have Reina Lopez, the Executive Director for Pecun here, who will be receiving her Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine as well. Happy to share the microphone with Reina if she'd like to come up and say a few words.
Yeah, Reina, that'd be great. Maybe anything, anything you can, that can be translated, because we can use this to help encourage people to get the vaccine. So it'd be great. You want to do mine while she's talking, or what?
Well, I want to make sure.
What's that?
I want to make sure.
Okay. Let's have Re...
Oh, should I go?
Yeah.
Well, I wasn't planning to say anything, but hey, everybody, I'm Reina Lopez. I'm the Executive Director of Pecun, Oregon's Farm Worker Union. And we have been meeting weekly with the Commissioner, and it was really, you know, I mean, I think that this whole situation has not discriminated, right? It's been affecting our entire community. And I remember the first week of the, when the virus really was spreading, I was getting calls, multiple calls, from people who were losing their elders. And a lot of those folks were calling to see if we could support financially. And as we started seeing that this was a pattern, that was when we realized that we needed to do something a lot bigger, something at a larger scale. And was actually when we started fundraising for the Farm Worker Emergency Fund for folks that were being affected by COVID-19, and really anybody who was a farm worker, we were like, if you were affected, we'll give you financial aid. We don't really, we're not going to put barriers on that. But as we were talking to people, we realized that there was so much more to it. Whole families that were getting COVID-19, and many people had horror stories of family members passing away. So I think that especially in these difficult times, and it's, in these painful times, it's important that we come together. But I've been, it's really been an honor and a privilege to get to know you better and to get to work with you and get to just bring together our common experiences. I think that for me today, I am a little bit nervous, I'm not going to lie, I'm very nervous about getting it, but I'm in the same boat. People need to see us get vaccinated. We need to lead by example, and we need to continue having these conversations and not let them go away, because I really feel like we've done a lot of good work together this past year. And just thank you to all the Commissioners who are here today, to the staff. I know this work has not been easy. I know you've been the first people that get criticized, and it's not fair sometimes, right? But you're our leaders, and we're doing the best we can, and we're going to keep doing it, and we're going to beat this thing. So thank you for all you do and for inviting me here today.
You're welcome.
Not trying to give you much.
No, it's okay. And maybe you can speak in Spanish a little bit when you get your shot, or just to encourage people when you're doing that? It'd be great. Yeah.
So the camera's not on him, if we're wanting to, yet. So can we see it on the screen to verify before you step? Now he is. Go for it.
And we got you to do all of your paperwork, and you're the same as you were when you filled it out.
Yeah.
Okay, so try, ooh, dang. So try not to make your arms stiff. Stay loose. Oops, yeah, stay loose. Ready?
Mm-hmm.
Here we go.
When are you going to do it?
I know, that was it. Wow, big nothing.
Just like a flu shot.
It is. Exactly like that, so kind of a little pressure on there. All right, and give you a Band-Aid, and you're protected in two weeks, right?
Yeah, it's easy.
A big nothing, yeah.
Really easy.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service. Appreciate it. Okay. Jan, I won't embarrass you anymore. I'll get dressed.
How come she's the only one that has to be embarrassed?
He doesn't care if you're embarrassed.
Yeah, apparently.
For Reina.
I did it all nicely clean for you.
I was just checking to see if you're growing horns.
That's only when I'm on Zoom that my... I should do that, post it to Facebook tonight and say, I had my shot today.
You can sit down, because this is the...
See that, they're having that drive-through clinic for the Capitol people.
No. I almost signed to this one. That's fine, you can do it. You can do it, and some people say that you should use your dominant arm to get the muscle working, but either way...
Yeah, let's do the dominant arm.
Okay. So you got your paperwork a couple of days ago, so does anything change? You're not, you're still feeling well, right?
Yes, correct.
Great. All right.
Make sure you breathe.
I know, I'm like, don't forget to breathe.
I forgot that part.
Yeah, just breathe, it's okay.
And Commissioner, oh, he's dressing.
Yeah, he's taking his shirt.
He needs to stay with us for 15 minutes.
Yeah, he will. He'll be sitting right up here, and you're going to be in the audience, right? The whole time?
We won't let him go anywhere.
Yeah, he'll go anywhere. Okay. Right there, relax your arm. Perfect. There you go. No breathing, right? Stay relaxed. That's it. Good job. You feel okay?
Yeah. All right. Good. We did it.
That's it. There you go. Should, do you want me to say something in Spanish for this?
Yeah.
Make sure you hold the microphone real close to...
Bueno, buenos dias. Soy Reina Lopez, la Directora Ejecutiva de Pecun, aquí en la reunión de los Comisionados del Condado de Marion County. Pecun, la Unión de Campesinos, hemos estado trabajando duro en educar a la comunidad campesina, a la comunidad latina del condado de Marion, en lo que es el COVID-19. Ya tenemos un año reuniéndonos con los comisionados, y pues una gratitud muy especial le voy a dar al comisionado Kevin Cameron, porque sí, ya tenemos cada semana sin falta hemos estado platicando sobre los efectos del COVID-19 en la comunidad latina, en las comunidades inmigrantes que son residentes aquí de este condado también. Y desde el comienzo notamos que habían, pues, problemas muy serios que estábamos viendo en nuestra comunidad, especialmente en términos de el apoyo financiero, los números de COVID, y también el miedo que la comunidad tenía en cómo iba a afectar en el trabajo, en la familia, en las escuelas. Y pues hoy les quiero enseñar que aquí me vacuné, y me siento muy bien. Me dieron la vacuna Johnson &amp; Johnson, y pues quiero decirles a todos que deberían también hacerse su vacuna, porque es la única forma que vamos a combatir esta pandemia, este virus que realmente ha causado mucho dolor en la comunidad. Y vamos a seguir luchando, seguir educando, seguir asegurándonos que haya acceso a la vacuna del COVID-19. De hecho, el 17 de abril a las 8:00 va a haber una clínica móvil con Pecun y Save on Health, donde nos vamos a vacunar más personas de Pecun, de la comunidad. Así que, por favor, síganse vacunando, síganse cuidando, y pues sí, sí se puede. La lucha va a seguir. Muchas gracias, y muchas gracias a los comisionados, al personal del condado de Marion. Su trabajo no es fácil, y lo sabemos, pero siempre están aquí luchando por nosotros, y se aprecia mucho este trabajo. Gracias.
I'm so thankful. Commissioner, thanks for being here. I forgot, I forgot, we didn't have anybody sign up for public comment. Thanks for being here, because now if something, if I do, I'm supposed to wait, what, 15 minutes? So in the next 15 minutes, if I fall out of my chair, at least we have a quorum still.
Yeah, that's good.
I was just kind of concerned about that.
I'm just saying, if you fall out of your chair, we're stopping the meeting.
But...
I didn't want to miss the vaccine party.
I do want to thank Reina for coming in, and I do want to emphasize the Health Department, and Michael, and Katrina, and Ryan, and all the work that's been put in since, I think we started that back in probably March, those weekly meetings, and now every other week meetings. And what's really been good in those meetings is that we're listening to each other, and we're expanding not only to the healthcare issues, but further and beyond. And just yesterday, for example, I was with, in a meeting with some of our Victim Services people, with Jane Downing over at, what's the name? Come on, anyways.
The Center for Hope and Safety.
Center for Hope and Safety. And I said to Jane, I said, we need to have you come and give a presentation and talk, because they're getting ready to open a center in Woodburn. So it's really good, Reina, and thank you. I know everybody's schedules are really busy, but when we can't all be there together, we've been making progress on communicating and being able to serve each other better. So thanks for that. The other thing I would say before we do consent calendar and presentations is, I want to thank Commissioner Bethel for these masks.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's Wear Blue Month.
That's right.
To, for child abuse awareness. We got to participate in that parade, all three of us, last Friday. And we don't, we need to bring attention to it all the time, but obviously, this month is important. And I saw your sparkly mask, and she goes, you don't want to wear sparkles. And I said, absolutely.
Absolutely. Yeah, why are you holding out on us? But she isn't. She's sharing the sparkly mask.
Is there a place people can acquire these, purchase these, if they wanted to wear them?
My friend Jill made them, so...
Really?
Yep. She just, I asked her the other day, she was making them for some sports moms.
Oh, my gosh.
And I thought, you know, I have lots of McNary wear, I should do something specific, and this is an important cause for me. So if I can sit up here in front of the world and let people know that you're hashtagging #InChildAbuse, I'm going to do it all day.
Might be a good fundraiser for Liberty House.
Well, this month, there's fundraisers going on for Family Building Blocks, Liberty House, and CASA of Marion County. So I would encourage people to go to their Facebook pages or their websites and learn about the message, and engage if you see a child in distress, you know, tend to that. Don't just ignore it.
Great. Okay, so I don't remember who's...
I'd be happy to do the consent calendar since I've been here. So Mr. Chair, I moved to approve four items under the consent calendar. Item number one, under Finance, approve a revised quitclaim deed correcting the spelling of the grantee's name for the sale of property ID number R13549 from Marion County to the grantee. Number two, under Health and Human Services, approve Amendment Number One to the Purchase Order Contract with the State of Oregon. Department of Administrative Services to add $45,000 for a new contract total of $120,915.24 for the monthly leasing fee for motor vehicles, shop services, and fuel through June 30th, 2021. Item number three, under Human Resources, accept the 2021 Compensation Board Recommendations for Elected Officials and Forward Recommendations to the Budget Committee. And finally, item number four, Tax Office, approve an order for property tax refund in the amount of $28,746.68 to Insight Investments LLC, account number 330592.
I will second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
None.
Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. That, can you believe it?
No.
Is all the business we have today. So the big part of it was the presentations, and as always, we maybe have some chatter to talk about. Anything you want to share, Commissioner?
I just want to say that last Friday, as you mentioned, we did the Child Abuse Prevention Month Car Tour. We went from Leamont Heritage Center to the new Salem Police Department, and it was a spectacular turnout. There was more than 50 vehicles, and it took us about an hour. We prepared vehicles, decorated, got to hang out with some really fancy dogs. There's one from Liberty House and one from CASA that came down to visit. And then when we finally ended over at the police department, we planted blue and silver pinwheels, which are probably one of my most favorite things ever. She put them in the sun, and they're sparkly. They're very happy. And now there's just a little garden of pinwheels bringing attention to Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we had several Marion County deputies there. The Salem Police Chief was there, of course, and other members of organizations from CASA of Marion County, Liberty House, and Family Building Blocks. And I certainly hope that they continue to do that every year. We were, some of us were in a Marion County van, marked van, and we decorated that. And when we came to an intersection at a stoplight, there was, of course, traffic, and a gentleman next to us was just elated to see the message on our window and gave us a thumbs up. And I think it's just a really positive way to spread messages of hope and change, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to do that.
I think something that, it's similar to a lot of the efforts that we do here, where it's not just a government effort. You know, you have the nonprofits and the community coming together, similar to our COVID effort, as Reina said so well, you know, when she was getting her shot. So I just think it's indicative of the kind of community we have, and an important culture that we keep alive.
Yeah. It's been an interesting week. So who wants to read the calendar?
It's my turn, I think.
I think I read it last week. I almost forgot about that. Gee.
We do have one event that's not on here. I don't know if the two of you are attending, but this Saturday in Gates, there's going to be a, Timber Unity will be present handing out trees for replanting, and there'll be a replanting effort up the canyon this weekend on Saturday. It starts at 10:00 a.m., and it will be at the Gates Church is where it will kick off. And so if folks want to come up there with their families, they're asking for donations for the tree, the seedlings, the trees. And then they'll give you direction on where to go to plant those, because obviously, it's not just a free-for-all. We want them to be able to grow. And so I'll be up there with my family, intending to do that. We purchased 10 trees, and so we're going to go up and plant them. I'm really excited for that.
That's wonderful.
Great.
All right. Can we read this calendar? Okay. Today is Wednesday, April 7th, and we are here in our board session, the Senator Hearing Room, the first floor of 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. At 11 o'clock this morning, we have a Board of Commissioners Policy Meeting located in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building. And then at noon today, that's April 7th, we have our Woodburn Marion County Virtual Meeting. At 4 o'clock this afternoon, we have a FEMA briefing for local officials. It's also a virtual meeting. And then tomorrow, April 8th, that's a Thursday, at 7:30 in the morning, we have our Kaiser Marion County Meeting located at Sherry's Restaurant at 4998 River Road North in Kaiser. And then tomorrow, Thursday, April 8th, at 9:00 in the morning, we have a work session, and we're reviewing our foreclosed property procedures. That's located in the Commissioners' Boardroom, the fifth floor of this building, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And then tomorrow, at 1:00 in the afternoon, we have our Health and Human Services Policy Meeting located in the Commissioners' Boardroom, fifth floor of this building. Again, tomorrow, 1:00 in the afternoon, there is a Veteran Steering Committee. Are we going to do both? We can't, are we going to have a quorum on both those? For AOC? Well, anyway, we may. Located in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And then Thursday, that's tomorrow, at 3:00 in the afternoon, we have an Association of Oregon Counties Health and Human Services Steering Committee Meeting located in the Commissioners' Boardroom, it's the fifth floor of this building. And then Friday, April 9th, at 8:00 in the morning, we have an Association of Oregon Counties Natural Resources Steering Committee Meeting located in the Commissioners' Boardroom, the fifth floor of this building. And then Friday, April 9th, at 11:00 in the morning, we have an Association of Oregon Counties Weekly COVID-19 Conference Call. That's a virtual meeting. Friday, April 9th, at 1:00 in the afternoon, we have an Association of Oregon Counties Transportation and Community Development Steering Committee Meeting located in the Commissioners' Boardroom. located in the Commissioners Boardroom, fifth floor of this building. And then Monday, April 12th, at 8:00 in the morning, we have an Association of Oregon County's Governance and Revenue Steering Committee Meeting located in the Commissioners Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building. On Monday, April 12th, at 10:00 in the morning, we have an Association of Oregon County's Public Safety Steering Committee Meeting located in the Commissioners Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building. Monday, April 12th, at 12:30, we have an Association of Oregon County's Legislative Committee Meeting located in the Commissioners Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building. Monday, April 12th, at 2:00 in the afternoon, we have an Association of Oregon County's Board of Directors Meeting located in the Commissioners Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building. And then Tuesday, April 13th, at 7:30 in the morning, we have a State Marion County Meeting located at Cover Bridge Cafe, 510 North Third Avenue in Salem. Tuesday, April 13th, at 9:00 in the morning, we have Calendar Review located in the Commissioners Boardroom. And that's the fifth floor of this building. And then on Tuesday, April 13th, at 9:30 in the morning, we have Management Update located in the Commissioners Boardroom, fifth floor of this building. Tuesday, April 13th, at 1:30 in the afternoon, we have our work session to review the first draft of the chip located in the Commissioners Boardroom. That's the fifth floor of this building. Tuesday, April 13th, at 2:30 in the afternoon, we have our Health and Human Services Policy Group Meeting located in the Commissioners Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building. And then Tuesday, April 13th, at 3:30 in the afternoon, we have a Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council located in the Commissioners Boardroom. That is the fifth floor of this building. And then on Wednesday, April 14th, at 9:00 in the morning, we have our Board Session located in the Senator Hearing Room, this room, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And then on Wednesday, April 14th, at 11:00 in the morning, we have our Board of Commissioners Policy Meeting. And then Wednesday, April 14th, at 2:00 in the afternoon, we have a Union Gospel Mission Tour and Discussion located at UGM Salem. That's 345 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. And then Wednesday, April 14th, at 4:00 in the afternoon, we have a FEMA briefing with local officials, and that is a virtual meeting.
Wow.
I just want to say that this is the first time since I've been here that we've had almost three pages.
Two, two and a half pages of meetings. Nine of those were AOC meetings.
Yeah.
And we post all those because we're, there's a potential that two of us might be on those and they're all virtual, even though it says it's in the boardroom. So that, and they've changed that format. So, but we're busy.
Yes.
And we're real busy. So, and I guess more importantly, serving and trying to do a good job. And we just want to thank all our employees out there. Do we still have one more vex, vaccine that, did we find somebody to take that?
We have three.
We have three vaccines. And if there's anybody here-
Yep.
-that wants to volunteer-
Jan's giving me the thumbs up from behind that pillar for you.
We're going to adjourn. It is the Johnson and Johnson. But we certainly want to get the vaccines in arms. And I think that's one, one of the things we've struggled with, you know. You know, at one point in time, only 60% of the fairgrounds was our people. And then we thought, okay, well, hey, wait, this is a statewide, this is a countrywide issue. So let's just get them in arms. So we want to make sure we, if we can, get those three vaccines in somebody's-
Don't waste that vial.
In somebody's arm today. With that, I don't have much else to share. We're going to be busy and we've got stuff to do. We good?
Yeah.
Okay. We will adjourn. Thanks.